Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village Board of Landings September 20th. Please join in, and I'm glad to be here.
I'm glad to be here. I'm pleased to be here. And to be part of which is what a nation. And this all but routine and justice.
Trustee Purcell.
Here.
Trustee Willis.
Here.
Trustee Colton.
Here.
Trustee Hyperman.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Here.
President Hopefield.
Here. Presenting staff at the meeting, my left our village manager Napoleon Hinkin, my right our village attorney Chris Cummings. For the audience as right our police chief, the new photograph, director of finance, Amy without keys. Economic and community development director Angela Messerance and the assistant village manager Tyler Paul. The minutes of September 12th, any additions to correct that trustee Purcell. Trustee Willis.
Yes.
Trustee Colton. Trustee Hyperman. Trustee Harris Jones.
One for me.
Trustee Roman. I have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So move second.
Then move by trustee Purcell, second by trustee Colton, roll call please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of five hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred dollars and forty-six cents. Comments or questions for the paper shop.
Okay.
That's the way.
Uh, how my question for you is?
Trustee Colton. Trustee Hyperman. Trustee Harris Jones.
For me?
Trustee.
Nothing for me.
And motion to approve the one, please.
So move second.
Then move by trustee Colton, second by trustee Harris Jones, roll call please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Point put to the group. Of that five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar claims, there's two items comprise the majority of that spending. Our payment to Chicago hike for water was thirty-six thousand dollars. And our payment at Hornet Creek's elementary district of ninety-nine thousand dollars. That amounted to four hundred and seven thousand dollars, or sixty-eight percent of that claims list. A paper, please, Miss Messerance.
So, good evening. Tonight, we have the owner of Blue Pearl Candles, Tim Rowe, with us. And Blue Pearl Candles is a retail store that's located at one hundred and one, seven, five, three, eight Dixie. Uh, that's at one hundred and seventy-fifth Dixie across from Bellagio's at Campbell's. Would you like to introduce your business, please? Obviously, yes.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Morning. Thank you.
Good morning. All right, um, I'm a little nervous, so please forgive me. Yes, I talk to people all the time, this is different. No need, yeah. Um, I introduce myself again. My name is Tim Rowe. Um, I am part owner in Pearl Candles. My daughter Terry is the other owner. Um, she is a student at HF. I'm sorry, she's at the Congress Group at HF. Um, and we have been at our location about a year and a half. Um, so there's a couple of things that we do there. Um, we sell candles, obviously. We sell soy candles, a little bit different than what you buy commercially, which is why our location is, um, a little bit special. Um, we sell candles, wax melts. Yeah, that's how I sound though. Um, wax melts, uh, candles, uh, fabric fresheners, lotion, and we also customize. So, you know how sometimes during the holidays or you're going to go visit someone, um, you just run somewhere and pick up a candle? You don't have to do that. You can come and get something delicious. We actually customize our candles. So if you want something special, say, for example, you want to give the mayor a gift, uh. No, no, no. Okay, so if you want to give the police sergeant a gift, hey, you can come to Blue Pearl, and I can literally write out, um. Congratulations, Denise, you're a wonderful person on your candle, as opposed to giving her something that's generic. So we do a lot of customization at Blue Pearl. We also, oh, so real quick, I'm gonna have my daughter pack this out to everyone on the board, well, here. Give you a pack of that, everybody. Not only do we do candles in-house, we can candles off-site for team building activities and corporate events. So if you have a corporate event that your company is having, they're looking for a vendor, uh, please consider Blue Pearl Candles. Uh, we are on Facebook, we are on Instagram, we also on Tiki Taki. Um, yes, Tiki Taki. Um, and if you can give one to everyone here as well, especially the sergeant, because I've been trying to reach her. Uh, if you guys have something, please consider us. Um, we have several staff members that will come out and teach, uh, people how to make candles. It is wonderful aromatherapy, it really helps calm the nerve, um, and it also uplifts the spirits. Uh, last but not least, we have a couple of candles, we have, we have a couple of classes at Blue Pearl. We've got, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. Uh, of course, we have candles, we also have jewelry making classes, we have pottery making classes. Um, we're also introducing make your own perfume and body oil classes. And we also are having in October for the children, um, decorate your own cookie, uh, classes that are coming up. So not only do we make delicious candles, um, we also have a lot of fun classes for our family to be involved with. Um, just have one challenge there and Angela and the mayor very familiar with it. Um, my site is not very, um, consumer friendly, it's not walkable, but Blue Pearl Candles is worth the ride. Uh, thank you so much, I appreciate your time. If you have a chance, I know this is very pressing, but if you have a chance, please join us on social media. Again, we are on, uh, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, under blue like the color. Pearl like the jewelry, candles has the deliciousness. Thank you so much.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation. So we are closed Monday and Tuesday. Um, so we are open Wednesday through Sunday, um, usually in the afternoon from three till about eight o'clock in the evening. Saturday, I am there from eleven to, ooh, seven or eight o'clock in the evening. Sunday, of course, I am there from two to six.
And it's right across from Bellagio.
I am to the left of Bellagio, so there's some confusion as to where my location is. So Bellagio is here on the right, I am actually to the left of Bellagio's, where the liquor store and the barber shop and the daycare are located.
Is he in time?
He is, he is fine. Uh, once you see the, uh, Bellagio, if you just look to the left, and there I am.
Anything you'd like to add that would be my mouth?
Uh, we have been open at our location for almost two years, will be two years in January, and yeah, we'd just really love for you guys to stop by.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Here from the audience, if anyone in the audience would like to address the board and end this topic not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Hi. My name is Quinn DiNatio. Um, this, this is my sister Adele, and this is my mom Tracy Kate. And today we're talking about cystic fibrosis. Hello. First, we would like to thank you for your. My family is involved in a ten-week fundraiser campaign to raise as much awareness and love as possible for cystic fibrosis prevention. Cystic fibrosis is a rare and serious genetic disease that damages the lungs and digestive system. Because of organizations, organizations like the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, they have been able to make incredible advancements to the medical treatments in such a way that they have increased both the quality of life and the life ex. Extensity of the people within with cystic fibrosis. You may ask, why is this cause so far into my family, and why should I move on to the village of Holmes? My mom and dad grew up in the HCH community and both graduated from HCH high school. When she and my dad decided to start their own family, then moved back to Homewood because they loved the community and wanted my sister and I to grow up with the same love and support that they did. One of my mom's closest friends also went to, also went to HF, and her sister had a son who was born with and is living with cystic fibrosis. Our fundraising campaign, campaign is for cystic fibrosis is called Team Luke. Luke is seven years old, the same age as my sister and cousin, who happened to be his best friend. Luke is a second grader at Willow School, participates in Homewood sports such as swimming, baseball, and soccer. He is a wonderful kid, and we want him to live the best life. My mom made a big goal when she started her campaign. That goal is fifty thousand dollars. In our family, it is, it is important to dream big, support the people around you, to do what you can to help your community, and always need to try your best at everything you do. We are very proud to say that we are over halfway to our goal and have already raised almost thirty-two thousand dollars. We have little less than three weeks left to reach our goal, and we believe we can. We have received so much love and support from Homewood residents and businesses already. And are asking for those that can contribute to consider donating to our cause and help spread awareness about these diseases. We have created several videos online to provide some information about cystic fibrosis. We understand that there are several growing causes, so we all, so all we can do is ask. We want to show Luke what it means to have a community supporting every way possible.
We have received donations from Lulu Bell's, Fornet, and Dairy Queen within Homewood. And thank you to the village of Homewood for allowing us to do the little lemonade stand at the Homewood Fest. Um, Lulu Bell has generously agreed to ask customers if they would like to kind of charge up for Luke and donate a dollar or whatever they would like to Team Luke. And we would love to see if the Homewood Business Association would help spread the word to see if other businesses would like to follow suit. As for the residents of our community, every little bit counts. Um, I'll share a link for our fundraising page, and maybe I can get it in the minutes. Um, and I have flyers with me as well that shows our campaign page with lots of information on it and a QR code if people would like to donate. So we just appreciate everyone for your time and go Team Luke.
And at the end, I have you with twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'm very proud that you did it. Um, I'm way out here to check the health of the problem.
Oh, thank you.
And I think everyone else can do that as well.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, I can't say this much. Yes, and you can, you are. Is it number enough? Yeah. Or it's, if you leave a name in the back of that bag. I have a buddy on the back, and everyone. Right, yeah, I'll leave a couple in the back for everybody to see. I probably won't say for the rest because little people, um, but thank you so much for your time and attention. Perfect. You want to?
Is there anyone else?
Oh, perfect. Thanks so much.
Good morning, beautiful people. My name is Tay Roseman. I am the owner of a place of zen located in Cherry Creek. Some of you may or may not know who I am, but I actually own a salon experience or a spa experience. So we have like the sous, we have estheticians, we have nail technician, we also, um, have hairstylists, so feel free to come by. We've only been open for a year and a half, so we still barely know we're babies in the community. Um, but some people love to have a while. Oh, we are open from eight o'clock to seven, but we also are based on appointments. So sometimes some people may come in on Wednesday or Sunday or something like that, but that's pretty much what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? If not, see for real, you're the one.
Thomas, I can review, you're right here. I'd like to introduce the board and the community to Dan Dean. Dan Dean was hired as a full-time officer effective Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Officer Dean applied for the position through the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Police Officer lateral application program. Since he is already a certified police officer, he was eligible to bypass the police academy requirement and immediately began field training with the Homewood Police Department. Officer Dean studied criminal justice at Purdue Calumet and is a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staffing Command. Officer Dean has served as a police officer since nineteen ninety-nine and most recently was employed by the Olympia Fields Police Department. During his career, Officer Dean has served as a patrol officer, evidence technician, accident investigator, detective, lead homicide investigator, patrol sergeant, accreditation manager, and administrative sergeant. He brings with him a wealth of knowledge, training, and experience, and we are very well, happy to welcome him to the Homewood Police Department and the village. Ms. Thomas, if you could administer the open office. Thank you. Have you written? For me, I state your name.
I, Donald Lee.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
The position of police officer.
Of position of police officer.
For the village of Homewood.
For the village of Homewood.
Salma Swear.
To Salma Swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances.
And the municipal ordinances.
Of the village of Homewood.
Of the village of Homewood.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my.
And I would invite that's family up here.
Thank you all very much. The only but to vote, we will vote, and I don't take separately, we may have a motion, resolution, are thirty-one to the day, the timing is getting roots enough.
What? Second.
Then move by trustee Colton, second by trustee Purcell, roll call please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved, if you would think, reading the vice mission.
If, if, Ken, could you stand up here? Just before, uh, Ms. Thomas reads the resolution, I just want to introduce Ken Rose now. Uh, he was hired back in May of nineteen seventy-four as a police officer. Over the years, he's served in a variety of roles, which he'll hear is resolution. But Ken was also my training officer back in nineteen ninety-five when I started, so I just want to take this opportunity to express my personal thanks for all you have done for me and my career over the years.
Resolution honoring Kenneth Rusnow on his retirement from the village of Homewood. Whereas Kenneth Rusnow joined the Homewood Police Department on May twenty-seven, nineteen seventy-four, after serving in the United States Army in Vietnam and receiving numerous medals, including the Silver and Bronze Stars. And whereas Kenneth Rusnow served not only as a patrol officer, but also as a member of the emergency response team and a range officer. And whereas Kent Rusnow helped mentor new members of the police department as one of the department's first field training officers. His contributions to the program were invaluable in that he trained new officers not only in policy and procedure, but also imparted upon them his years of knowledge and experience, as well as importance of commitment and devotion to duty. During his time as a field training officer, he was involved in the training of twenty-eight new officers, ten of whom went on to achieve the rank of sergeant, one deputy chief, and one chief of police for the Homewood Police Department. And whereas Kent Rusnow received numerous awards and commendations in the course of his career, including the Homewood Area Chamber of Commerce nineteen seventy-five Police Officer of the Year Award for the arrest of four armed criminals. Nineteen ninety-three Police Officer of the Year Award for his exceptional contribution to the department's field training program and the Cook County Sheriff's Law Enforcement Award of Merit in nineteen ninety-nine for performance beyond the call of duty. And whereas Kenneth Rusnow retired from the Homewood Police Department on May thirty-one, two thousand and three, after twenty-nine years of dedicated service as a full-time police officer. And whereas Kenneth Rusnow returned to the Homewood Police Department on October fourteen, two thousand and three, as a reserve officer with primary duties being the assistance to the patrol division with traffic control, parades, and other large events. Whereas Kenneth Rusnow has served the department as a part-time community service officer since April nineteen, two thousand and four. Duties of this position have included animal control, parking enforcement, coordination of the abandoned automobile program, and evidence control. And whereas Kenneth Rusnow has been a dedicated, valuable, trustworthy, and hard-working employee who has represented the police department in the highest standards and has developed a strong working relationship with his peers. And whereas Kenneth Rusnow retired on August thirty, twenty twenty-three, having served the village of Homewood for twenty-nine years as a police officer and nineteen years and ten months as a reserve officer and community service officer for a combined total of forty-eight years and ten months of dedicated service. His service to the police department and the citizens of Homewood is hereby recognized. Now therefore be it resolved that President Hopefield and members of the Board of Trustees are honoring Kenneth Rusnow and commended for forty-eight years and ten months of outstanding dedicated service to the citizens of Homewood.
Oh, it's one of the times. Like I said. They've done a great right, and, uh, the people that they served with, they're very proud people. You know, they like, they love their job, they go out of their way to do the best that they can. And it's gonna continue that way for everyone. So you're in good hands. Thank you very much. And Russ and I was, uh, first police officer I ever worked with when I was a trustee in nineteen seventy-seven. And I teach in a sense, but we keep a very modest man, believe me. If this applies both in the police department and military, uh, uh, beyond question. So thank you for all you've done for everyone. This is Thomas. Items B through, B through I, B through I of the consent agenda, please.
Board is asked to pass resolution R thirty-one fifty-nine honoring Vincent Starr's on his retirement with twenty-one years of service in the Homewood Police Department. The board is asked to approve the reappointments of Elaine Rudsky and Jack Levitt to the Senior Advisory Committee. Their three years will expire September and the sixth, twenty twenty-six. Also, Paul Kramer to the tree committee for three years for the term expiring September twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Board is asked to approve resolution R thirty-one sixty pertaining to executive session minutes from February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three through July twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the destruction of audio recordings from October twenty twenty-one through March twenty twenty-two. The board is asked to approve resolution R thirty-one sixty-one determining which executive session minutes for portions of those minutes no longer require confidential treatment. Board is asked to authorize President Hopefield to enter into an agreement with the Illinois Department of Public Health and Family Services for reimbursement of unrecovered costs at the ambulance transports through Medellin. Board is asked to pass ordinance M twenty-two sixty-five granting a special use permit to a tattoo studio and a body piercing facility for Robert Garrity of Inkynum at one eight six six one Dixie Highway in the B three general business zoning district. The proposed business received unanimous consent from the planning and zoning commission. Board is asked to approve a budget amendment in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars to the general fund for the payment to Board of Homewood for sales tax revenue sharing. The board is asked to pass resolution R thirty-one sixty-two approving an amended fund balance policy that will require the village to increase the balance from four months of operating expenses on hand to five months on hand. Staff makes a recommendation due in part to increasing costs in operating expenses, sales tax revenues leveling off from pandemic levels, and impacts from Cook County assessments being shifted to commercial properties. The change also includes recommended steps the board can take if the unassigned fund balance falls below four months.
Thank you. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to any of these matters? If not, board comments, trustee Purcell.
Um, nothing specific other than I'm excited to finally getting a spot.
Trustee Willis. Trustee Willis. Trustee Colton.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, I received a bunch of messages from people in the community saying that they wanted to see you here, and I'm delighted, so welcome.
I'll, I'll jump in, I know, I've known that Garrett and his family for over forty years, and, um, couldn't be happier to be here in town.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Welcome.
Trustee Roman.
Yes, I just echo everything that's been said, welcome.
Mr. Garrett and I go way back.
Yeah.
So this is a good niche, a good spot. I think you and I agree on that, and, uh, welcome. With that, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
So move second.
Then move by trustee Purcell, second by trustee Colton, roll call please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye. Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, thank you all. New business. Miss Sikowski. Thank you.
Uh, Crab Bags has requested a change in liquor license class for their location at one eight-six-eight-one Dixie Highway. Crab Bags has been open for business since June. They currently hold a Class seven B liquor license, which was approved by the board on April twenty-fifth. A Class seven B liquor license allows for the sale of beer and wine only. After operating successfully for several months, Crab Bags has requested a change to a Class four A liquor license. This change would enable Crab Bags to offer more options to their dining patrons. A Class four A liquor license allows the retail sale of any alcoholic liquor for on-premises consumption only for establishments with a bar and no more than twenty-five percent of the annual gross receipts can be from alcohol sales. The liquor commissioner supports this change of liquor license class. And if the board is in favor of the request, staff will ensure that the liquor license application for the new request is completed, and then a Class four A liquor license will be issued to Crab Bags. Is anyone here?
Miss Walker? Come on up. You're darn right. You're not getting out of this easily. You're up for us this evening for an expanded liquor license. Please tell us why.
Um, well, we've been open since June twenty-seventh. We're doing good. We're doing really good. I'm excited. Customers are loving the seafood. Um, but we've had customers requesting mixed drinks. We've had customers leave because we don't have mixed drink options. So, um, I humbly ask if we could extend our bar. Um, and I think we, you know, do great, even greater.
Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to this liquor license, uh, request? Trustee Purcell.
I support.
Trustee Willis.
Kind of reluctant just because it's just been a short time. Um, with the beer and wine, I kind of would like to see it. Uh, see the business in operation with beer and wine a little longer. That's just my concern.
Perfectly all right. Trustee Colton.
Um, I just have a question for Miss Sikowski. I super support like helping your business help what we can. My only concern is the, um, this opens us up, opens it up for gaming. Is that, that was a.
It's a part of the license.
Just so, so that there's no way of separating.
No mask.
Okay. Um, what are your plans in terms of replanning on doing any gaming?
Well, I do want to extend gaming.
Okay.
Um, honestly, after speaking with others and looking at the space, we may not be able to offer it. Um, but if the space allows, I do want to bring gaming in as well.
Okay, okay.
Um, I think, um, our competitor, our competitors and, you know, we would be able to stand against them.
Yeah, and that's exactly kind of where, like, I'm not crazy about the gaming, but honestly, I also want to make sure that you have everything you need to be able to be competitive. Um, and I don't want to stand in the way of that. So, um, I'm going to support it.
Thank you.
Trustee, hi, come.
I, I committed to the South Gate area not having more game in this, you know. If it's a package that we can't separate, then I can't support it, um, at this time because, um, yeah, I just don't see that neighborhood shopping center as a good location for, um, for their family licenses.
Trustee Harris Jones.
I love them.
Trustee Roman.
Um, I echo kind of what, um, trustee Colton and trustee Hyperman have said about the gaming. I completely understand the mixed drinks and that being part of your business. And I, I can actually see people leaving because of it, and I don't want to hold you back from that. Um, I don't love the idea of the gaming in South Gate. I know that you said that that's not really a definite plan yet, but have you given any thought to like what your sign it like? Would you be advertising with signage that you have gaming and everything? I mean, it's very, there's not a lot of parking there as it is. I just don't think that bringing gaming into that location is a great idea.
And, um, again, I have not delve into it one hundred percent, the gaming piece. The space just isn't there in the location. Um, I talked to a couple of, or actually more than a couple of the gaming, you know, as soon as we opened, they came in gaming, gaming, gaming. I'm like, we don't qualify for gaming. And they're like, oh, it'll help you with your, with this cost and that cost, you know. Um, and that would be, that would be good. But my main focus is, um, bringing mixed drinks to my customer because that's what they're asking. Gaming isn't, isn't my focus.
I guess then I have a question for, I don't know who directly maybe, um, paternity Cummings, but is there a process where down the road, if we felt that we wanted to separate the two, could we modify however it's written up? That we could potentially separate the liquor license from the gaming and then decide who gets the gaming and that?
Uh, just to be clear, this restaurant, because it's got a license to pour not to do on-premises serving negative gaming today. Whether or not they.
They're in, they're in wine permits gaming.
They're in wine permits gaming. What the state says as long as you have the ability or the local license to serve alcohol on the premises, whether it's mixed drinks or beer and wine, they could do that right now. Um, in terms of several years ago, the village used to have a special endorsement for video gaming as far as liquor licensing, they charged more for that. The board made the decision to consolidate that. There's also kind of a gray area as to whether the village had the authority to do that. Um, and so that's why we ended up merging them together. So voting on this isn't going to affect your ability to have gaming in the first place. They were a big part of that.
Okay, well then you have my support.
Mrs. Walker knows I, I initially was not in favor of giving you a full liquor license. You did try it out with beer and wine for a short period of time. You came in and talked to me on a Saturday. Business is good. You had said you are missing some business because you don't have it, and I'm more than willing to go ahead with the full liquor license. So with that being said, I have a motion to approve M twenty-two sixty-six, a Class four A liquor license for Crab Bags at one eighty-six-eight-one Dixie Highway.
So.
Motion. I'm sorry. You, did you make a motion?
Uh, but we.
But the same time.
Yeah.
Motion made by trustee Colton, second by trustee Purcell. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Hi.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Colton.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman. Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee, uh, Roman.
Hi.
Motion is approved.
Thank you all.
Uh, you work with the Sikowski, getting your liquor license.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Much success to you. And as long as you're up here. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three audit.
Each year, the annual financial report, or as most of us refer to it, the audit, is presented to the village board for acceptance. The audit is the village's scorecard. How did the actuals end up compared to the budget? Is the village maintaining its healthy fiscal position? What are some areas of concern? These are all sections the finance department works through throughout the year, but the audit gives the final score to our village board and residents. The results of the audit are then used as we move forward to the next fiscal year budget process. The village contracted once again with Lauterbach and Amen to audit our financial records and internal controls. And Don Shaw with Lauterbach and Amen will be presenting, um, some of the results here shortly. Some highlights from this year's audit is that the village's overall net position increased by thirteen point two percent. Net position is a useful indicator as to whether the position of the village is improving, deteriorating, or remaining constant. A significant amount of time is spent working in and analyzing the village's general fund, which is the general operating fund of the village. It's where the majority of the village's revenues, such as taxes, fines, and fees are deposited, and where most of the village's expenses, such as salaries, services, and benefits are paid out of them. After all is recorded, revenues are higher than expenses, remaining funds are added to the village's fund balance. And a healthy fund balance allows the village to have protection against any internal or external factors that may affect our ability to continue to provide high-level services to our residents. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the village added four point six million dollars to the general fund fund balance. Um, of that four point six, uh, million, one point six was related to the ground emergency transport ambulance fees that, um, started up during this past fiscal year. Um, about six hundred and fifty thousand was a result of sales tax performing better than we expected. And overall, our expenses came in at about ninety-five percent of what was budgeted, or about one point one million dollars under budget. In total, the village's fund, general fund fund balance is seventeen point three million dollars. And that balance is broken out into three categories, non-spendable, assigned, and unassigned. The unassigned portion is approximately fourteen million or seven months of operating expenses. So just several minutes ago, an amended fund balance policy for the general fund was approved. The amended policy increases our minimum from a balance of four months to five months of operating expenses. So staff will be, will be bringing recommendations for the available balance over the required five-month minimum to an upcoming board meeting. We'll continue to monitor the financial data closely, watch for trends in revenues and expenses, and that information will be used during our next budget process or to make recommendations throughout this fiscal year to the village board. We appreciate the board's support in continuing to make Homewood a financially stable community for years to come. And I'll now invite Don Shaw with Lauterbach and Amen to briefly go through the annual financial report.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. I first would like to thank Amy and the entire team for all their help in making this another success a lot of years. So without your help, this would not have been possible. So thank you. I'm just going to go through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker the packets you received. If you turn to page ten, you'll find our Lauterbach and Amen letterhead. This is our independent audit report, which provides a clean, unmodified opinion. It's a highest of pain you can receive. Basically say, so we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers that they're presented. The next section of the audit report is the management discussion analysis. This really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year, or what the numbers truly mean, I would suggest reading that section. I always say if you're going to read one section and one section only, that's a good, uh, part of the audit to read. Your individual fund financial statements begin on page thirty. And as Amy mentioned, your general fund was at a, at seventeen point three million dollars. Eighty-one percent is unassigned, which is a very healthy fund balance for the general fund at a village year size. As Amy also mentioned, the net income for the general fund was at four point six million dollars. This is, uh, primarily due to your revenues coming in higher than anticipated and your expenditures being below budget in the current year. The notes of the financial statement really provide further detail. It's how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're going to find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. And lastly, on page one hundred is the start of your budgetary information. So if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you want to go to find those comparisons. And as, uh, Amy mentioned, you can take a look that the general fund revenues were higher and your expenses were below budget.
So doing away with the accountanties.
We're in very good shape. Yes, you guys have a very good fund balance, and you had a really good year.
Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to the audit?
Congratulations.
Word comments, trustee Purcell.
I know it's taken a lot of work. I really appreciate everything.
Absolutely.
Thanks for all the help.
Yeah, thank you both and for all the confidence you allow us to have in our community. That's awesome.
Thanks for the hard work. Thank you very much.
With that being said, may I have a motion to accept the audit, please? Then moved by trustee Purcell, second by trustee Hyperman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Uh.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Colton.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Roman.
Hi.
The motion is carried. We are the envy of most communities in the Chicago land area, not just South suburb, the Chicago land area. Congratulations to staff and this board. They get it. General board discussion, trustee Purcell. Trustee Willis.
Uh, just everybody that proceeds in, COVID's back, be careful. You're in a hard way. That's it, you know.
Trustee Colton.
Um, I want to thank everybody who came out to the, uh, September nineteenth committee of the whole meeting. Um, we had about thirty members of the community come out and speak and talk to us and dialogue with us. Um, and it was great, you know, it was nice to have an opportunity to talk about downtown amenities and things like that. And I think the great reaction that we got from the community tells me that maybe we need to do this a little bit more often. So, um, I would like to just sort of put it out to staff that let's have a conversation about when, I mean, I'd like to see it every month, but like, we could do it every other month, too. I'd be all right with that. Um, but I think it needs to be regular because you know what? The way to keep a community strong is to keep people engaged.
Thank you, trustee Colton. Trustee Hyperman.
Regarding, uh, conversations this coming Monday, of course, the first Monday of the month. As usual, I will be at Starbucks from five to six on Harwood. Um, open to talk about any topics home with me during and also submit to you.
Trustee. Harris Jones.
Thank you all for coming out to the Fall Fest. It was a great, successful day. The weather was perfect. Um, venue, vendors that came out, there came the wares, and I hope that you guys will continue to support the Fall Fest.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing to add.
Just a reminder to everyone, the first Saturday of October is branch chipping at Public Works. If you have branches, not coniferous, no evergreens, nothing like that, but your deciduous, that's the regular branches and the trees. Bring them on down there to Public Works from eight in the morning until noon time, and they will ship them for you. With that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss potential litigation?
So.
Then moved by trustee Colton, second by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Uh.
Trustee Willis.
Hi.
Trustee Colton.
Hi.
Trustee Hyperman.
Hi.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Hi.
Trustee Colton.
Hi.
We stand, uh, take a short recess, and we will go into the session. Thank you all for being here.